Restless tonight, 'cause I wasted the light. Between both these times, I drew a really thin line. It's nothing I planned, and not that I can. But you should be mine, across that line. If I traded it all, if I gave it all away for one thing, just for one thing. If I sorted it out, if I knew all about this one thing, wouldn't that be something? I promise I might not walk on by. Maybe next time, but not this time. Even though I know, I don't wanna know. Yeah, I guess I know, I just hate how it sounds. If I traded it all, if I gave it all away for one thing, just for one thing. If I sorted it out, if I knew all about this one thing, wouldn't that be something? Even though I know, I don't wanna know. Yeah, I guess I know, I just hate how it sounds. Even though I know, I don't wanna know. Yeah, I guess I know, I just hate how it sounds. If I traded it all, if I gave it all away for one thing, just for one thing. If I sorted it out, if I knew all about this one thing, wouldn't that be something? If I traded it all, if I gave it all away for one thing, just for one thing. If I sorted it out, if I knew all about this one thing, wouldn't that be something? If I traded it all, if I gave it all away for one thing.
Oh, you get me ready in your 56 Chevy. Why don't we go sit down in the shade? Check shelter on my front porch, the dandelion sun scorching like a glass of cold lemonade. I'm gonna do the laundry, if you pay all the bills. Where is my John Wayne? Where is my fairy song? Where is my happy ending? Where have all the cowboys gone? Why don't you stay the evening, kick back and watch the TV, and I'll fix a little something to eat? Oh, I know your bad cards from working on the tractor. How do you take your coffee, my sweet? I will raise the children, if you pay all the bills. Where is my John Wayne? Where is my fairy song? Where is my happy ending? Where have all the cowboys gone? Oh, you're wearing my new dress tonight. But you don't even notice me. We finally sold the Chevy when we had another baby, and you took the job in Tennessee. You made friends at the farm, and you'd join 'em at the bar almost every single day of the week. I will wash the dishes, while you go have a beer. Where is my John Wayne? Where is my fairy song? Where is my happy ending?
Good evening and welcome to the April 4th, 2016 regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council. First item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask our great volunteer, Samira Hussain, to come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge. If everyone could please rise.
Aye. I pledge the allegiance and flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Samira. Next, we have our reflection. We actually do have a formal invocation this evening. We're going to invite Haytham Yunus to the podium to lead us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In the name of God, the giver of mercy, the giver of grace, I offer up a prayer in the name of the one God who has so many names. I ask for peace and I ask for guidance. We often ask for the good things that we want, and of course, peace is absolutely necessary in this time. But we forget often that in order to achieve anything such as peace and tolerance and harmony in society, we must be ourselves rightly guided. So I ask for guidance, that God will make our intentions pure and our actions correct, so that we may neither harm ourselves nor others. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And I'll note that we are also thinking of our colleague, Henry Marafa, as he is in his recovery from leukemia. Next, we have approval of minutes, and tonight we have one set of minutes. It is from the work session on Monday, March 14th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Samira, I'll move the approval of the minutes from March 14th for the work session.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 3-0. Next, we have our consent agenda, and let's see, we have two items on the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move approval of the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 3-0. Next, we have presentations, and I would like to invite Mona Najim to meet me at the podium. And see right there. Thank you for being here. So, this is a proclamation of Mayor and Council designating April 2016 as Arab American Month in the city of Gaithersburg. City of Gaithersburg recognizes Arab Americans throughout the month of April, providing an opportunity to learn about and appreciate the culture, history, and contributions of our Arab American neighbors. The Arab world is culturally rich and diverse, encompassing 22 countries, three monotheistic world religions, divergent political loyalties, as well as differences of locality, region, and kinship. Arab Americans have been part of American society since the American Revolution and have played prominent roles in government, business, and industry, education, culture, the arts, and public affairs. On April 11th, next week, the city of Gaithersburg's multicultural affairs committee will celebrate Arab American Heritage Month with a reception of traditional dancing, singing, artwork, student presentations, and refreshments. We are honored to have Mona Najim to accept the proclamation. Ms. Najim works with Senior Connection and has previously served on the Commission on Aging. In addition, she's a member of the Montgomery County Committee on Hate Violence and serves on the Board of Directors for the Montgomery County Muslim Foundation. And I'm gonna go get the proclamation right now. Hold on, hold on, it gets even better. It gets better. This is a proclamation on behalf of the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg. Whereas since the 1880s, Arab Americans have constituted an ethnicity made up of several waves of immigrants and Arab-speaking from the Arab-speaking countries of the southwestern Asia and North Africa. And whereas, Arab American heritage reflects a culture with a strong commitment to family, economics, and educational achievements. And whereas, Arab Americans have contributed greatly to the success of our nation in the areas of commerce, business, politics, education, medicine, and the arts. And whereas Montgomery County is home to a thriving Arab American community whose valued presence has added to the rich cultural mosaic of our community, now therefore, I, Judd Ashman, by the power vested in me as Mayor of Gaithersburg, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Arab American Heritage Month in the city of Gaithersburg, proclaimed this fourth day of April 2016, and signed by me. Now. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you very much. I just wanna say that on behalf of all Arab Americans in Montgomery County and especially in the city of Gaithersburg, I'd like to thank you, first of all, for the honor of choosing me to receive this proclamation. It's so dear to my heart. And second, for inclusiveness, for your reaching out to diversity, for promoting better understanding of our cultural heritage, of Arab American cultural heritage, of our contribution to this country. I just wanna say that I'm so honored and proud to be representative of Arab Americans. I have with me my son. I have, we have two sons. One who has served in the Iraq War, had two tours, and served our country, and I'm very proud of that.
Let's get him around the podium.
Please. My second son, who's sitting here taking a picture of his mama, is a proud owner of his own company. He's an entrepreneur and the president of.
Executive decisions.
Thank you.
President, CEO, Chief Accountant.
So I wanna thank you very, very much, and I want to thank Samira Hussain, who has started the Arab American Heritage Month and for being our leader in the Arab community. So thank you so much, Mr. Hussain.
Thank you. Would you like to come up? Let's do a picture with the family.
Kim is a teacher at South Lake.
Yay!
Thank you so much. May I, may I please?
Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is public comments, and this is the time where the Mayor and City Council would like to hear from anyone who'd like to speak on any topic that's not a public hearing topic, and that's pretty easy tonight because we have no public hearings. So, we ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes. When your time is down to 30 seconds, the timer will beep and turn yellow, and when your time's up, it'll beep and turn red. And we ask that you state your name and either your address or your neighborhood. When you speak, please come on up, Mary.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here tonight. I'm Mary Hoffrich. I live on Rabbit Road in the Pheasant Run community. And I'm here to ask you to please initiate the process that you have for installing a speed hump in our community. We're only three blocks long on Rabbit Road, but while we are auto traffic light, we are pedestrian traffic heavy. Our little kids go up the street to Brown Station Elementary School. Our big kids go the other way to Pheasant Run, which is the other road that bounds us, to wait for the school bus. We have many, many pedestrians. We have people who like to walk in the neighborhood. We have a lot of people who walk their dogs. If you've seen our street or been on it, you know that we go down the hill, flatten out, and then up the hill. And it doesn't matter which way you come, because you're going down and then up. At the bottom, we have a four-way stop, and it works great for two ways. One way, they come down through the fields, past the Public Works Department, past Robertson Park, they come down that hill, and some of the cars, the drivers, I don't think even tap their brakes. And they go flying through that stop sign, we think maybe 40, 45, 50 miles an hour. And it's a real hazard. Certainly not a lot of people do it, but enough that we're concerned. And I say "we" because we have a community listserv, and I did poll my neighbors, and out of 30 respondents, 26 agreed that we have a problem and we'd like a speed bump. Four disagreed, but it's important to know that not one of them lives on Rabbit Road. They're on the satellite streets. So those of us who live on the street and see those cars flying through there would like to have you go ahead and start the process. I understand what they do, is they survey the neighbors. Hopefully, we'll have the votes, and hopefully, we'll have our speed hump installed. We don't want a lot of them, by the way. We just want one, to my knowledge, on the side of the road where the Public Works Department is, right before Rudus Road. So that's our request, and we'd appreciate it if you would start the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Tony, I know Ali has received this request. Can we have Ali provide us with an update? Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who'd like to be the next speaker? Come on up, Samira.
Good evening, Mayor Ashman and council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm gonna read a statement that's.
Samira, out of formality, state your name and your address or your neighborhood.
Samira Hussain. I live in 46 Bryan Court, Gaithersburg.
Thank you.
I'm gonna read a statement from Arab America, which they could not make it here this evening and the traffic. So in behalf of Arab America, I'm gonna start, and this was issued on April 1st. In the midst of the current climate of anti-Arab biases, as a result of 2016 presidential election, Arab Americans are celebrating their heritage in hopes that all Americans will appreciate their contributions to the U.S. during the month of April. Arab America, www-arabamerica.com. The leading provider of digital media about Arab Americans will celebrate Arab Americans Heritage Month via our website, television, radio, and social media platforms. Arab America celebrates the history, culture, and people that have been enriching and shaping American society for generations. The month of April is a special opportunity to enhance understanding of nuance and the diverse aspects of Arab Americans heritage that is often forgotten or intentionally avoided by the media. Arab America will debat a new feature each day in April highlighting the culture and influences of Arab Americans. Unfortunately, Arab Americans are exposed to mostly inaccurate or stereotypical images of themselves as a result of media bias, and more recently discriminating political rhetoric via the current U.S. presidential campaigns. During this election season, the increased anti-Arab bashing has made our community a target for hate and bigotry, said Warren David, he's the president of Arab America. It is our intent to see more balanced coverage of Arab Americans and their contributions during Arab American Heritage Month. Additionally, Arab America is combating the racism directed toward Arab Americans through recently-launched social media campaign, #Hamas haters. By naming those who validate the Arab American community as Hamas haters, we can express our culture positively while showing intolerance to bigotry. We hope you will join our campaign to raise awareness of National Arab American Heritage Month, and visit our website for daily information on Arab Americans and their contribution to society. I would like to also announce that the Arab American Institute, they honor Khalil Jabraan every month, every year, during the month of April. And this year's gonna be April 19th in the Omni Shorum. And also, please visit our book exhibit and cultural exhibit at Quince Orchard Public Library for the month of April. Thank you.
Who'd like to be the next speaker? Come on up.
Yes, my name is Jose Blanco. I own Blanco Services located at 429 East Diamond Avenue. And I came into City Hall for the zoning and wanted to move my business, because currently where we're located is a 2,800-square-foot unit that is not, it's still in the CBD zone. And I want to continue to, I want to move to 671 East Diamond Avenue with its Gaithersburg Glass's old location. I emailed the mayor and all the documents stating that it would be pretty much a lateral move, would not impact the master plan, stating that 671 is located on the other side of the train tracks. Also, it's adjacent to the property where HOC and GAC services are located, which are in I-1 zoning, but nobody's gonna put it at a shop or do any type of, anything else except what it's currently occupying. I don't feel like the landlord is gonna be able to rent out that space for office use because of the trains and because of the other industrial areas there. The reason for our move is because we're growing. We wanna offer the automotive services, which I feel like our services are to a higher standard. We cater to a lot of BMW owners, a lot of, you know, high-end vehicles. Not just taking care of them, but we also take care of every other vehicle, dealing with insurance purposes. With the limited funds and limited space that we've had, we've had numerous successes having cars showcased all through up and down the East Coast, and a few that have gone to SEMA in Las Vegas to feature them. A lot of people don't know about us because we're a small business, and we want to maintain it small until we understand the responsibilities of running a business and properly running the business. But right now, the current. It doesn't allow us to grow, so I'm either asking for the city to take that into consideration, that we would just be making a lateral move next to Gaithersburg Glass, where, I mean, Gaithersburg Glass and 671 would be next to Cap World, right in front of Gaithersburg Equipment, and it would not impact anything in the future. I feel like if we moved there, it would probably be for another 10 to, maybe even 20 years versus just for three years. But if the landlord decides to sell or something happens, that we would have enough capital earned at that time to be able to make a bigger move to an even bigger location. And if not, another option that the city of Gaithersburg can provide where we could go that won't impact us in our pockets as much, because we started with only $3,000 and have grown in the last four years drastically.
Thank you. Congratulations on your success. I will just say, I checked my email. I did receive your email. I will share it with the council and with staff, and have staff provide some sort of response or recommendation to you. So look for that in the next day or two. Please, come on up. Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Steve Augustine out from the Education Foundation, Gaithersburg High School Education Foundation. So I guess we're residents sort of right down the street here on Education Boulevard. I'm here tonight on behalf of the foundation here with my wife, Lori, my partner in all things, including the Education Foundation. It's the mission of the foundation to enhance educational opportunities for students at Gaithersburg High School and to bring equity in funding and facilities. So I'm here to speak in support of item 11A on your agenda tonight. It is lucky, I think, that we're here, as you made a proclamation for Arab American Day, and I wanna, or month, rather. And I wanna just note that one of the, I think, the great things about Gaithersburg High School is its tremendous diversity, including the contributions of all the Arab Americans who are students at the school. So it's great that we're here on that day. So, but I want to talk to you about the sign agreement itself. The funding for the electronic sign for Gaithersburg High School was the very first project we identified for the foundation in 2011, five years ago now. We've had the money raised for the signs since sometime in 2012. So we're very, very excited to be here today at this point, where you're being asked to approve the MOU with Montgomery County Public Schools. We strongly support the MOU. In today's high school environment, electronic signs are an essential communication tool to reach the students, the parents, and the community. In fact, when we surveyed this five years ago, 20 of 25 high schools already had electronic signs. At least one has added a sign since then. So, you know, it's down to just the very few, and Gaithersburg is one of the last ones here without an electronic sign. So we urge you to approve that. It is our goal to see this sign built and installed before school starts next year, so in August. It's only a few months away, I realize that, but that is our goal. So we strongly support that. We urge you to approve that. And lastly, I just wanna say thank you to Michelle Potter and her staff for their patience, for their perseverance in working through all of the issues to get this done. It's been a long road getting here. We're very, very happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Come on up, Jim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jim McDalty. I'm the president of the Seabrook Homeowners Association. I live on Pembroke Lane. I wanted to just take an opportunity to thank Mayor, Council, and Mr. Tommasello for finally getting State Highway to finish the intersection at Mid-County Highway and Seabrook View, or Seabrook Oaks Boulevard. Our only question is if they're, State Highway going to actually finish the crosswalk that is due to be put in there. But I know we spent a lot of time here, members of our community, making a very strong case for the parking situation. We're very pleased to see that council and mayor had an executive session. We look forward to seeing the results of that being discussed in the short order. But I did wanna take the time to say thank you and not be here asking for something for a change. So thank you very much to y'all.
Thank you, Jim. Can we get an update from Ali? If you can get an update from S.H.A. on the crosswalk, that'd be great.
Sure.
And this is at Mid-County and Seabrook View.
I drove there this afternoon. It's quite nice. Bumpy.
Bumpy.
Do we have any other speakers? Not seeing any. We will move on to, from the mayor and council, and we will start with council member Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to start off by showing my support for the Arab-American Heritage Month celebration this month. It's celebrating a very important element of our community here. To our Arab-American friends, residents, I say, Marhava, Shukran. Thank you for all that you do in our community, and I think it's important to say, particularly as Samira said, in this day and age, we have to recognize every element of our community and the diversity that we hold so dear. Not much to talk about other than a very interesting event took place, first for me, which is Council on the Communities at Diamond Elementary School. I had a good time being out, talking to residents, you know. It may not come as a surprise, but when we actually go into the communities, we get more engagement with community members, so I had a good time talking to folks. I look forward to doing more in the future, getting around the community so that we can engage our residents, hear back from them, and to actually, you know, put our faces before I have a vacancy announcement. The mayor and city council are seeking members to serve on a number of city boards, commissions, and committees. Joining is a way to get involved and help your community. The following have vacancies. Animal Control Board, one alternate public-at-large, Business Community, and one alternate representative of the Montgomery County Veterinary Medical Association, or shall have training and/or experience in the proper training or care of animals, open until filled. The Board of Appeals, one full member and one alternate member, open until April 15, 2016. Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs, one full tenant representative and one alternate tenant, open until filled. Community Advisory Committee, Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee, Educational Enrichment Committee, Multicultural Affairs Committee, Police Advisory Committee, Senior Advisory Committee, and Transportation Committee. There's a lot of committees that you can get involved in. If you are interested in serving on any of the above, please send a letter of interest and a resume to Mayor and City Council, 31 South Summit Avenue, Gaithersburg, Maryland, 20877, or via email to cityhall@gatherbergmd.gov. For more information and official announcements, please visit the city's website at www.gatherbergmd.gov, or contact the city manager's office at 301-258-6310.
Thank you, Rob. Mike.
Okay, thank you. I'll read this announcement first. A closed meeting was held at City Hall by the mayor and city council on Monday, March 21st, 2016, at approximately 8:50 p.m., pursuant to a motion adopted unanimously. Meeting was proposed to be closed pursuant to the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3, Section 3-305B7, consult with council to obtain legal advice. The topic discussed was the implementation of permit parking programs. Present at the meeting were Mayor Ashman, council members Harris, Sesma, Spiegel, and Wu. City staff present was City Manager Tommasello, Deputy City Manager Enslinger, City Attorney Board Assistant City Attorney Johnson, Police Chief Shroka, Police Sergeant Scarf, and Neighborhood Services Division Chief Roman. Upon conclusion of discussion, the closed meeting was adjourned at approximately 9:30 p.m. So, today is one of the most important days of the year in the United States. It's opening day, traditional opening day, and the news that I have to share is the Nationals won their opener in Atlanta, 4-3 in the 10th inning. Bryce Harper continued his MVP habits with his first at-batting and a homerun. Okay, so, and then, who else hit a homerun? The Orioles, I think, were in a rain delay, so I can't report anything on that. So that's important news to start, anyway. Really happy to see our annual recognition of Arab-American Month in Gaithersburg. Inclusiveness and diversity are one of the strengths, I think, of our city, and we're proud to be able to honor the Arab-American community every year and every day with the things they do. And would like to personally thank all members of that community for their involvement in the city. So, coming up, before the next regular meeting, the Kentlands 25 Gala will be held on April 16th. If you have a desire to attend, I think some tickets are still available. You can find that on the Kentlands 25 website. And then, another thing I wanted to bring up, as many of you know, we're, the city is a member of the National League of Cities. I have the fortune and honor of serving on the Board of Directors of National League of Cities and also on the Executive Committee for the Board of Directors. Recently, we discussed a bill that was passed in North Carolina, House Bill 2, HB2. It was, it's called a Religious Freedom Bill. But what it does is it actually allows people on the basis of religious, statement of religious freedom, to discriminate against a specific segment of the community. One of the things that is, that the National League of Cities, one of the bedrock principles of the National League of Cities, is to support local control at the municipal level and to prevent preemption of that control by state or federal government. What this House bill does in North Carolina is actually removes that local control and supersedes at the local level, any decision made at the local level. In particular, this was a law that had been in place in the city of Charlotte. One of the laws that was overturned is a law that had been in place in the city of Charlotte for quite a long time, almost two decades. And because it was recently amended to allow, to prevent discrimination of LGBT individuals from using, or basically transgender individuals from using bathrooms for which, the gender of which they identify, that was the amendment to that law in Charlotte. The North Carolina legislature moved very quickly, the majority moved very quickly to do something about that law. They didn't think it was right, and the governor signed it immediately. So it was passed pretty much in secret in about 12 hours and the governor signed it. And I think there's been repercussions about that throughout nationally. But one of the issues with the law is that, basically, it allows the state to supersede a lot of local ordinances that would be passed by local government. So that includes minimum wage laws, that includes anti-discrimination laws, that includes any other local ordinance that the state majority in the state government felt was, should not have the local decision-making authority available to them anymore. So the National League of Cities decided, we discussed this last week, and we decided that we would issue a press release or a media release stating the clear position of the National League of Cities in terms of support. Let's actually, I'll read you the title of the release. "City Stand United in Support of Local Authority and Inclusiveness in Face of Actions to Preempt Local Control." So, North Carolina isn't the only state where this has happened. Recently, this has happened in other places. It's clear that this law is likely to be ruled unconstitutional very quickly. A number of suits have already been filed. But this is a principle that's important to any city in Maryland, and in particular this city. We're also concerned about actions of the state legislature in imposing views and rulings upon municipal governments. We fight that on a regular basis. It's too bad that we have to do that, but, you know, local government, municipal government is the government that's closest to the people. We're the government that bears the responsibility and probably knows best and is in the best position to make laws and determine what's best for our residents without interference from the state or from the federal government. So this release from the National League of Cities simply restates that. I think most, and it'll be shared with the Maryland Municipal League as well, and it's being shared with every member city in the United States that's a member of the National League of Cities. The NLC represents 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the United States. And every city has something to lose if laws like this get passed in every, in any state. So that was one of the important things that I wanted to talk about tonight. So that's it.
Thank you, Mike. Ryan.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll add my best wishes on the recognition of Arab-American Heritage Month. I've worked with the Multicultural Affairs Committee of the city and with Samira for a while now, and it's always been my pleasure to put together and to help in small ways these wonderful events that we do every year, and kudos to Samira for her leadership in that, and thanks to all who've been involved in the events that we do as a city, and also the other community events around Montgomery County and around Gaithersburg that are happening this month and that happen throughout the year. Samira, you mentioned Khalil Gibran, and the event to recognize him is one of my favorite authors, and as a kid, The Prophet was one of the books that inspired me the most as a child. And as a side note, I love hummus also. And in fact, we go through a couple of tubs of hummus a week in my house, which is another issue, but, but no, we look forward to the event next week, and we appreciate so much all that is done by our neighbors and friends in the Arab-American community here in Gaithersburg and throughout the area. And we continue to support you and support our inclusiveness and our diversity, as has already been said. I also just, also wanted to recognize and thank Jim and Beth and the community of Saybrook. It's rare that communities come out just to say thank you. We still have plenty of work to do on the issues facing Saybrook, and we will continue to do that work, but thank you for being here and thank you for coming up to publicly say thank you. We do appreciate it. A number of events over the last couple of weeks that I just wanted to run through that hadn't been mentioned yet. A handful of us here up on the dais had the opportunity to meet with a couple other municipal leaders around the county, with the county council president Nancy Florine on March 23rd. It was an opportunity to talk about a lot of different issues, including the challenges being raised by business models like Airbnb and other kind of sharing economy issues, and how local governments are supposed to deal with that, how, if at all, we're supposed to regulate it. That was an interesting discussion. And it was another opportunity for us to tell council president Florine how much we appreciated her support of the city's effort to move the Watkins Mill Interchange forward. She has been showing up in Annapolis, testifying in support of the project. She's been a real champion of it, and we appreciate her and her county council colleagues and all they've done on that front as well. Rob mentioned the Council on the Communities event that we had for Orchard Place, Diamond Farms, and Furniture Farms Communities, and that was a very nice event, as always, an opportunity to go out and be in the community and hear folks' concerns and hopefully work on some of the issues that they've raised. Having mentioned the Watkins Mill Interchange, I'll also mention that there was a hearing held in the House of Delegates on March 31st. The mayor testified again in support of state legislation that would essentially require the State Highway Administration to move forward with the project as originally planned and not to alter or delay it as they are contemplating doing. That legislation passed overwhelmingly in the state senate a couple of weeks ago, or about a week and a half ago, which was a great partial victory, but now we have to take it to the finish line. So we are working the lobbying avenues with our friends in the House of Delegates, and we encourage members of the public to reach out to the House of Delegates and really emphasize to them, continue to emphasize to them how important this project is for economic development and traffic relief and connectivity in the city of Gaithersburg, Montgomery County, and the region. So please do that, and hopefully it will pass the House as well, and hopefully it will be enacted. On April 2nd, the city hosted its annual Supervita Tax Assistance Day, which is an opportunity to help provide free tax prep assistance to folks who are financially eligible, in conjunction with our Bank on Gaithersburg program, which supports financial education and financial independence initiatives in the city. Happy to report that the program was able to help 60 people complete their taxes, and hopefully many of them will, who are eligible for the Earned Income Tax Credit, will be able to get that tax credit as a refund and then use it as a down payment on savings or other expenses that they need to meet for themselves and their families. Also, 12 folks opened new bank accounts with our banking partners as part of that project as well. And again, the idea is to get folks who are unbanked or underbanked, instead of using lenders that in some cases are predatory, to be steered towards traditional banking institutions and to be able to build up their own financial independence over time. So that project continues, and we're proud of the success of it. A number of us had the opportunity to visit with our colleague Henry Marafa in the hospital this weekend. We continue to wish him well. It was a really good visit. We're thinking about you, Henry, if you're watching on TV right now, and he's, as has been said, he's been extremely active from his laptop, continuing to weigh in on important city issues, and we know he'll continue to do that. I have a formal announcement about some upcoming events and activities in April. You can enjoy seasonal produce and more at the Main Street Farmer's Market in Kentlands, opens Saturdays year-round. The Thursday afternoon Folks Corner Farmer's Market here in Old Town opens on May 5th for the season. April is also Green Month in the city of Gaithersburg. We're celebrating with an environmental awards ceremony on the 18th, a Community Green Up Day on the 23rd with multiple locations throughout the city for you to volunteer, and a free screening of the film Oil and Water on the 29th. Quilters: A Musical About Pioneer Women is onstage at the Arts Barn through April 17th. Murder at the Mansion presents A Wedding to Die For on April 8th, 9th, and 10th at the Kentlands Mansion. As has been noted many times already, we'll be commemorating Arab-American Heritage Month with songs, dances, and presentations at the Activity Center at Borer Park on April 11th. The annual State of the City address takes place April 14th at Asbury Methodist Village. The event includes the presentation of awards for the distinguished citizen, outstanding organization, and distinguished friend of Gaithersburg. We'll also be introducing our newly-named junior mayor and saying thank you to our outgoing junior mayor at the annual State of the City. You can learn about trains during the next Discovery Day at the Community Museum, that's on April 17th. The museum's after-hours lecture series features a discussion about cartography in children's literature on April 19th. Please make a note that the Gaithersburg Baby Bazaar has been canceled for this month. Other events, we're working with the Montgomery County Humane Society to once again host Paws in the Park, a dog-walking festival, on April 24th at Borer Park at Summit Hall Farm. Spring and Flowers is the theme for the Toddler Storytime Station Program at the Community Museum on April 26th. And the Singer-Songwriter Workshop and Concert Series concludes with Marty Jones and Don Dixon at the Arts Barn on April 30th. That's a wonderful musical series, I encourage you to check it out. For more information on all these events, including hours, admission fees, and ticket purchases, you can go to our website, www.gatherbergmd.gov. A couple other quick points I wanted to mention. Tomorrow, I have the pleasure of speaking on a panel at an annual conference on financial capability. We talked about the Bank on Gaithersburg program. We are partners with an organization called CAFE Montgomery County, and CAFE stands for the Coalition for the Advancement of Financial Education, and CAFE is the host of this Financial Capability Symposium. And tomorrow morning, I'll be participating in that panel and having an opportunity to talk about Bank on Gaithersburg and the successes we've had with that program, which was founded here in Gaithersburg around back in 2008 or so, after I learned about a similar program at a National League of Cities conference, and it's been a great success and we continue to grow it. So I'm looking forward to participating on that panel. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that I've had some conversations with staff and with my colleagues up here about recent expansions of our prohibition on smoking at a couple of our city facilities. Some of you may recall, we voted to prohibit smoking at city-owned playgrounds fairly recently, and we discussed and agreed that smoking should be prohibited at the water park going forward as well. I think it's time that we had a conversation about expanding that prohibition to cover all city properties, frankly. There are a number of other jurisdictions in our region that have already done this. I think it's in the interests of public health, and I obviously know that it will inconvenience some folks, and I think a grace period is warranted if we do implement a full prohibition, but I did want to at least get the conversation started and suggest that maybe in a future work session or council meeting, we could put this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Virtually everything that I would have reported on has been said at this point, so I will just... just say that it was a pleasure to go, to have a chance to go visit Henry over the weekend. He was in good spirits, but he's got a big fight ahead of him, and so he needs your thoughts and prayers, and he appreciates your calls and cards, so please keep them in your thoughts. I want to thank staff for leading us through Council on the Communities last week. It was a very successful event. One event that I don't, I didn't remember hearing mentioned is on the 18th, which is the date of our next regular meeting of the Mayor and Council. Before the meeting, we have at 6:00 PM the environmental awards here upstairs in the gallery. These are awards we give to organizations in our community that are doing good things for our environment. And I will mention, of course, May 21st, we've got a great big book festival coming up with some awesome authors and programs, and hope you all can make it. Learn more details about who's coming to speak to us and what opportunities there are for you and for your kids at gaithersburgbookfestival.org. So with that, we'll go to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items tonight. Thank you for the kind words from Mr. McNulty. We are preparing to do our notices for the 18th where we're going to discuss parking along Victory Farm Drive. We'll be notifying the surrounding HOAs, some of the cars, et cetera. I saw that the presentation itself is almost done, and we'll be going through it as staff, so we'll be prepared for that. Should be good evening. Thank you, Ryan, for bringing up the smoking. Actually, we were just talking today, the personnel team, about employee use of tobacco, chewing tobacco, that stuff you put in your mouth, I'm not sure what it's called, but dip or something like that, even vapor, that it just doesn't, just doesn't match our wellness initiatives, it doesn't match our healthcare costs, things like that, so we'd like to add that to the conversation as well. I'm assuming we would bring you some sort of presentation about the impact, or? It shows up in a lot of different places. It shows up in the personnel rolls, it shows up in the city ordinances and city code and things like that, so we'll try to put something together.
I noticed Mike was sort of nodding, so I see some ascent from him. Rob, are you good with adding this conversation to?
It's worth having both conversations.
Okay.
Do you want to, us to present you with a draft resolution that you can tweak, or do you want to have a presentation about where this could go? We don't need an answer tonight.
Okay. But I do think we should think about impacts and what's the practical impact of it, both on staff and the public?
I think it's always good to have a presentation for the benefit of the public.
A couple of legislative things, the, I think I discussed the last meeting about the pesticide bill that's making its way through the state legislature. Two different bills have passed, the two houses, they do vary slightly, though they both ban the use of neonicotinoid pesticides, starting on January 1st of 2018, which is a pretty blanket ban. So if that suits our purposes, we may be able to use the state legislation. Obviously, we couldn't exceed it in any event, but hopefully this will work for us. We're kind of running out of time. Hopefully, this will pass before the session ends. And then finally, just a note of update, you know, we've been working with the Comptroller's Office on the tax billing issue. I mean, it's late as today, there just seems to be a pretty deep misunderstanding about how this is going to work. They either cannot or will not provide the address data that we were, so I'm thinking forward, you know, these payments don't start for a couple of years, that maybe this needs to be a legislative issue for us next year. I'm sure a lot of other towns share that posture, but if there's no way to prove at this point what it is they're trying to do, and they don't seem to be in any hurry to give us any sort of evidence, so that being the case, if we can't come to some agreement over the summer, you know, perhaps we can discuss this as being part of the legislative agenda for the next session.
Yeah, I don't understand why they can't verify the list of addresses that we give them, or, you know, validate their findings with our addresses.
The simple question is, what is your list of addresses that you believe to be in Gaithersburg? And they consider that confidential tax information, which is frankly a bit of a stretch.
You know, we could, you know, they don't have to give us a list of anything. They can, we can give them the list and say, these are the official, these are the addresses that are in Gaithersburg.
Which we do.
If there are any that are not on this list, then...
Yeah, we do that every year, don't we?
We do that every year, and we want, we really want them to give us their list, because we give them our list, they can say, oh yeah, that's the list, and...
Our point is that we want to verify for ourselves.
I agree, but at some point, they can't verify the...
I'm not sure they can, like, at this point. I'm not really sure they can.
Can't we do a PIA request? Have we considered that? Have we considered, and if they come back to us and say, oh, it's covered by some exemption, we could litigate that if we had to.
I think so.
What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly an approach that we could take, because I don't really understand how the addresses could be confidential. I understand how the personal information from the individual taxpayers would be, but the addresses themselves should not be confidential.
Well, I think we should consider that. I mean, hopefully, we can negotiate around it, but if we can't, and we're still at this impasse in a little while from now, I think, you know, we as a city should consider that, and I'm happy to reach out as president of the chapter of MML here in Montgomery County to other cities and towns who might be interested in joining us in that effort.
I don't see that we need to wait till the next legislative session for action on this. I think that we just keep pushing forward.
We're pushing it up from the staff level, and we may need to go straight to the comptroller, but so far, they've been kind of hiding behind these nebulous IRS guidelines that everything about your tax return is private information, including your address, which they've never been able to prove to us that is actually the case.
You know, the county can pose the, well, the assessments and everything are not private for every address.
Yeah, but this is about income tax.
That's property taxes, yeah.
But there's still addresses, you know, related to some tax information, so.
Yes, so just, just something that we continue to work on, we won't obviously wait till next January, but we'll continue to follow this aggressively. Gaithersburg is the most affected in terms of dollars, though some other towns, the pro-rata share is enormous of what the comptroller is talking about.
All right. Next, we're going to have Economic Development Update with Mr. Tom Longen.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. A couple business updates for you. As you know, a couple of years ago, Emergent Biosolutions received a $250,000 award through the city's Economic Development Opportunities Fund to support the company's headquarters relocation from Rockville to 400 Professional Drive. One of the conditions of that award was to relocate 235 full-time equivalent positions to the headquarters site plus hire an additional 133 by the end of 2018, as required. Once again, Emergent has provided my office with their annual reporting, and it's nice to report that the company appears to be making good in their commitment. At the end of 2015, they had a total of 271 people employed at the site with a gross payroll of about $48 million, generating about $3.4 million in withholding taxes, revenues of about $520 million. Overall, a good year for Emergent, one in which their president and CEO says deliver financial results in excess of their expectations, and the company's stock was just rated a strong buy. All in all, good for Emergent. Not quite the scale or scope of Emergent Biosolutions, but another company taking flight from Rockville to Gaithersburg is one called EcoDomo, a recycled leather tile design company. It's an interesting concept. They were established in 2005. They're a firm that specializes in sealed leather products using primarily for floor, wall, tiling, and surfacing, stuff like that. It has applications in light commercial, institutional, and residential environments. Sharon and I toured these operations last year, and what made it attractive was their, how environmentally benign this company actually is. The company generates all of its scraps through discarded car seat upholstery, luxury handbags, industrial scraps, even belts discarded from goodwill from around the country. This is how they generate all of their material. These remnants are then pulverized, and the resulting fibers are mixed with other materials and pressed into sheets that are colored and texturized to look like genuine leather. They're a member of the U.S. Green Building Association. Their products require a minimum of 65% of post-industrial waste, and they often qualify for LEED construction credits. Past and current clients include Starbucks, Bank of America, California Closets, Marriott, and Whole Foods. Here in Gaithersburg, they will be leasing about 7,300 square feet of space at, long vacant space actually, at 630 East Diamond Avenue here in Old Town. They have six employees, but are growing fast, and they're applying for toolbox assistance, so we'll see them soon.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinances, resolutions, and regulations, and Michelle Potter, as she understands her agenda item is up.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council.
Good evening.
The resolution before you tonight, for your consideration, authorizes the city manager to enter into an informational sign-use agreement with Montgomery County Public Schools. The city has maintained a working relationship with Gaithersburg High School and Montgomery County Board of Education dating back to 1982, when the city purchased the land now known as Borer Park. These three entities collaborated to design the current static changeable letter sign located at the corner of Education Boulevard and Route 355. In addition to these parties, Gaithersburg High School Education Foundation desired to convert this existing sign into electronic informational sign boards. An internal task force comprised of Parks, Recreation, and Culture, IT, planning, Gaithersburg High School, and Gaithersburg High School Education Foundation was created to explore the concept, design, and research code requirements. In 2013, the sign ordinance, part of the zoning ordinance of the city code, was modified to allow electronic signs for both public and private entities. An agreement was approved by legal counsel for the city and MCPS. The agreement contains language referencing Exhibit A, conceptual drawings of the sign outlining city and Montgomery County Public Schools spatial controls, and Exhibit B, the city's adopted sign ordinance. And for the benefit of the public, I have two photos that are contained in Exhibit A. So this is the existing double-phase static luminate sign. And this is the proposed sign. It is a rendering, so it's not the final product. It'll look much better than what you see upon the screen. So for the mayor council, I just wanted to point out one item is in the third box. The color is correct on this diagram, but staff needs to update the information in the text of the notes in Exhibit A-1, just for your reference.
Oh, because it says purple?
Correct, so it should be the colors of Gaithersburg High School.
Gotcha.
The blue opaque background with the yellow letters and the logo.
So the logo would be in that little space to the left?
Correct.
Where I think it says, place logo here or something like that? I couldn't really read it, but...
Right.
Okay, got it.
Okay, the city and Gaithersburg High School staff will operate the sign in accordance with the city's adopted sign ordinance. The task force will meet periodically to evaluate the overall effectiveness of the operation. The agreement shall be in effect for 10 years from the date of installation, with the right to extend the agreement for an additional four, five-year consecutive terms. For each term this agreement is extended, the city and MCPS shall enter into a written addendum documenting their agreement to the extension. This project is budgeted in the city's FY '17 capital improvements project budget, 83-2 Borer Park, in the amount of $89,100. MCPS will reimburse the city $39,600 for the purchase of their sign. A request for proposal is being finalized to bid this project. Staff will be before you with a resolution to award the contract in the near future. The city will oversee the project and be responsible for ordering and installation of the sign. The Gaithersburg High School Education Foundation will provide the necessary funds to MCPS, who will reimburse the city for their portion. So in addition to Mr. and Mrs. Augustino, I want to acknowledge Pete Guiling, representing MCPS, and members of the city task force, including Lim Board, Trudy Schwartz, Dennis Enzinger, and Pete Cottrell.
Thank you, Michelle. So thanks to you, thanks to staff, thanks to the Augustinos, and to the Educational Foundation, and to MCPS. Comments, questions?
Yeah, I'll start with a comment. As Steve mentioned earlier, it's about darn time. I do remember well the conversation when it started about five years ago and how excited all of us were for this idea, so it's nice, you know, the wheels of government sometimes turn a little slowly, but it's nice to see that we're here now. I just had a couple of quick questions. I'm just curious, what is the, what is the shelf life of this capital investment? How, how long does a sign like this last? I mean, the agreement could be renewed for up to 30 years total, and I'm just wondering, will the sign sort of exist for 30 years with normal maintenance, or?
It should, but with the advances in technology, we will be updating the software or anything else that goes along with that, and that's included in the agreement.
Oh, good, it is. Okay, great.
For both MCPS and the city.
Great. And then the only other question I had, which I think I know the answer to, is if you compare the existing signage to the mock-up, the, the top portion of the existing sign has those, in smaller font, little signs to notify folks that the water park and the Activity Center and other city facilities are up the road there on Education Boulevard. I assume those same messages about the facilities will be displayed on the dynamic portion of the sign in other ways, so we won't lose the opportunity to tell folks, hey, these facilities are up here.
Correct, so in the new sign, you will see the green opaque with the G logo and Gaithersburg, and then we will utilize the sort of PowerPoint presentations of the changing sign to go ahead and advertise what is on-site, because those words that are in the existing sign are so small that people don't see them, number one, and they do show up, and they say, oh, I didn't even know there was a water park here, even though it is on the sign.
Okay, great.
As an example.
Well, those are my only questions, and I am excited to be voting in support of this in a moment.
Get out.
Mike, Rob? Okay. Wilson?
Question about the term, and this is just being a contracts guy. I know it looks like it talks about bilateral agreement for the extensions, but it doesn't explicitly say that. I know if you go down to the termination clause, it talks about the unilateral right to terminate at 100 days, 20 days' notice. Would it be worth explicitly stating bilateral?
That's a question for Lynn.
Because it talks in terms of the right to extend, and it doesn't say whether it's conveying that right unilaterally or between parties.
I mean, that's certainly something that we can add to the agreement.
And I'm excited to vote in favor of it.
Okay, well, who wants to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries 3-0. Thank you very much, Michelle. Next, we have the introduction...
You can applaud out there if you want.
We have the introduction of resolutions to propose amendments to the charter of the city of Gaithersburg, and Lynn, you're going to lead us in this.
Yes, I am. We do have a number of charter resolutions before you this evening, and the majority of these were discussed during the retreat session that we had a month or so ago, but I'll go through them one by one. There are a couple new ones, so I want to particularly point those out. This was part of a kind of comprehensive review of the city charter that's been done over the last year to update our charter, and the ones that are remaining are a little bit more of the substantive ones. The first section is Section 4, which deals with qualifications of council members, and it would add a requirement for council members to be domiciled in the city at least one year prior to the election. That's consistent with our current requirement for the mayor, and that is a change that was recommended by the Board of Supervisors of elections. And if you have questions on any of these, feel free to interrupt me as I go through. The second is to Section 8, which deals with the powers of the mayor. This was something that we discussed during the retreat where it wasn't, this is one where I guess where you all didn't provide necessarily clear guidance to staff as to what position you wanted to take, so we put it in here, and yeah, certainly it's up to you all tonight whether it gets introduced or not. But this would give the mayor the ability to vote when council members are, who are present eligible to vote, are equally divided, so it would give the mayor a vote in a tight rate situation. The next section is Section 19, which is the enumeration of powers of council, and this provision is one that's been in the city code for many, many years, and it's a little bit outdated. It has a long, long laundry list of specific powers that the mayor and council have. What we're trying to do is to update it, consistent with the requirements for local jurisdictions under the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, which basically gives the council the power to pass any ordinance as long as it's not contrary to the Constitution and laws of the state of Maryland, and also serves the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. Next is Section 24, which... Next is Section 24, which deals with our Board of Supervisors of Elections and is a provision that allows you all to remove a member from the BOSE. We're just striking the public, from the public hearing process. There would still be a hearing process, but it would not be done in public because we look at that as being akin to a personnel matter. Next is Section 41, and this is a new one that was not discussed during the retreat. It is changing the advertising date for the public hearing on the budget. Currently, the charter provides that it's 15 days, and we're changing it to between seven and 21 days prior to the budget. And the reason that we're doing that is we currently are required by state law to advertise the constant yield, and by state law, that's set at seven to 21 days. So we would like to run those ads concurrently and give us a little bit more flexibility so we don't have to do a separate ad for each.
Thank you for anticipating my question about why they put a cap on it. I understand, you know, at least seven days. I didn't understand the 21-day cap, but that explains it.
And that was something that was requested by the Finance Department. And all the ones you'll see here tonight that were not discussed at the retreat were requested by the Finance Department. Section 42 is also a new one that was also requested by our Finance Department, which deals with, again, a budget issue on appropriations, and they wanted some clarifying language in the charter provision that did provide that once you adopt the budget ordinance, that the amounts stated in the budget ordinance for proposed expenditures as well as specified appropriations, that those monies then can be spent. So they were just requesting some clarification language in that charter provision. I saw Stephanie here earlier, but she had it out, so... Section 44 is also a new one. This is, again, deals with the budget. It was requested by the Finance Department, and they were clarifying some of the language in the current charter, dealing with operating expenses and clarifying that that related to the general fund and then other specific funds that are designated in the budget. And then Sections 54 and 55, we did discuss at the retreat. These deal with the city's ability to borrow money, both bonds and notes, and we are saying that you would do that subject to the city's financial policy that you adopted, I think, just last month, and so that all decisions will be made consistent with that policy. So if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them, and we're looking for introduction of these provisions.
So I think it's important that we say that we're not intending to borrow anything at this point.
Correct.
We'll continue to be pay-as-you-go, but in the instance that we do need to do that for an emergency or for anything else, we'd be able to do it because it's already in our charter or laws.
And it's already always been there, just not utilized.
Yeah, well, this way you don't have to explain it again, that we can do it. The only one that I don't recall, I actually don't recall the specific discussion, was the mayor's vote in the case of the tie. That's the new one. I think everything else I remember discussing.
That one was discussed during...
I remember we discussed it, I just didn't remember that we had a conclusion there that, you know, that there was a consensus to move forward with that or to just leave it here for discussion.
Yeah, I think that was one where, again, it seems sort of equally divided, where I think there were two strongly that did not want to introduce, and then two that were, didn't clearly express a position.
So we didn't have anybody to break the tie.
Yeah. So that's why I put it back on there, is just, you know, certainly, you know, whether you want to introduce it tonight is within your discretion, but I thought because staff didn't have really clear guidance as to which way to go with it, we included it in those for introduction this evening.
I'm pretty sure I was one of the folks who opposed it, I think on the same grounds as the broader discussion that we were having of a couple other proposals. The idea that we don't want to create any situation where we would invite gamesmanship on the part of, you know, who attends a meeting and how many council members are in attendance, and can we create a situation where someone doesn't have to vote on something in order to force a tie? And I was just a little concerned about that. I think the system that we have now works pretty well, and, you know, the instances of a tie vote are so incredibly rare, I think, on the council in the last many, many years, that I just didn't see the justification for it. So as I recall that conversation, I was one of the folks who didn't feel there was a need for it.
I think I was the other one.
Yeah, so anyway, that's my feeling on that. I did have a question about Section 44. That's the one that talks about the distinction between the general fund and the other funds, and the idea there was to separate the capital from the operating budget. Since we always use the term capital budget and operating budget, I just wanted to make sure that the term general fund is defined in a way that it's clear that it means just the operating budget, and may very well be the case. We just don't generally use that term when we're talking about distinguishing the operating and capital budget.
We don't. And general fund is an accounting term. What I think, my discussion with Stephanie, what we're trying to get at is, for example, the funds that go into the Stormwater Fund or the Economic Development Fund, at the end of the year, they can automatically remain there.
Sure.
Whereas general fund, expenditures that were not made revert within the budget back into the general fund.
Right. They become the surplus for the whatever for the year, right?
But it was a little vague that all funds shouldn't refer to the general fund.
Gotcha.
Which we haven't done consistently. We don't have a lot, we don't have any enterprise funds, so, but we are expanding our funds, given that we have forest conservation and stormwater management and economic development.
So we did, do we need a, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't have any problem with the intent of the proposal. I just wanted to make sure that in other places, there's a clear definition of what we mean by general fund versus other funds, and that the capital budget is clearly defined as something that is not part of the general fund, and it seems like that's the case, but I just wanted to check that.
I mean, we have definition sections in other resolutions and ordinances as well. Maybe we just need to have that definition, like the general fund and operating capital, et cetera, so that they're well-defined. So, I mean, once we start talking about it, it's going to be defined, but I think it should probably be memorialized that way.
Do we need to vote on each of these separately if we were going to introduce them?
You can, or you can do them as a group as well, whichever is your preference.
Rob, did you want to add anything before we get to voting?
I'd just say that on the mayor voting, my recollection of the conversation was that it was two opposed, two for some variation of a voting right, and then one council member who was on the fence, I guess for lack of a better term.
Well, Henry wasn't there.
Well, I believe you expressed your discussion with him.
I did.
Somebody did, where it was conveyed that there was at least some interest. The way it's written is more expansive than I'm comfortable with, but I think we can introduce, I'd be in favor of introducing it that way, and then just knowing that we would potentially amend it to something less expansive at later date. It's worth having the conversation, I think.
I'd like to introduce all of them except number eight. So I'll move that. I'll move introduction of the proposed changes for Sections 4, 19, 24, 41, 42, 44, 54, and But not eight.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that carries 2-1.
So there is part of Section 8 that I think is important, but I think that's already enumerated there. It's already, the change, I guess, was the vote, the mayor's vote, so we don't, yeah, I'm fine with this.
Okay. All right. There we have it. So Nick, is that all you need from us, Lynn?
That's all you need from us. We will schedule a public hearing. I think that's tentatively set for May 16th.
Okay. All right, so next we have staff guidance, and I would like to invite the Set Angle to lead us in this discussion, or the next two discussions, actually.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I am here to talk about two opportunity grants. In the FY16 budget, up to $25,000 was authorized to provide grants to nonprofit organizations for programs, services that are new, innovative, and/or address emerging needs or special opportunities for city residents. We have already granted, you have already approved, one opportunity grant in the amount of $7,000, so there's currently $18,000 in the pot. Tonight, the Community Advisory Committee is recommending funding for two programs, and I will start off with the first one. They are recommending funding in an amount not to exceed $5,000 to support an onsite volunteer-based tutoring program for 21 formerly homeless children at the Seneca Heights Apartments. Funding would be used to purchase six locked-out computers and one printer to assist students with their homework assignments and help them in subject areas identified as needed for improvement.
And this is, the requester is Montgomery County Coalition for Homeless?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like a worthy cause to me. What questions?
Well, so the only question I have is, if these children are resident at Seneca Heights, that means that they're now enrolled in a local school?
Yes, they are Montgomery County Public Schools students.
Okay, so are any services provided at that school for tutoring or anything like that?
There have not been any services provided as far as after-school programming for the children. They have some space that has been designated specifically for tutoring at Seneca Heights, and they're currently looking for volunteers to sign on, but they need the capital to provide the programming and the assistance.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't duplicating or replicating something that MCPs is already doing.
Yes.
So this seems like a very reasonable amount, high-impact, actually, if it works well.
Yep.
I just had one question. Do we know what the scope of internet access is at Seneca Heights? I mean, if we buy the computers and the kids need to actually connect to a server or something to do research or whatever their homework assignments are or tutoring assignments, is that part of the project? Seems like this is just proposing to buy the hardware, but I'm not sure.
Yes, they currently have internet service. They have a few computers that are quite outdated, and which is why they need to upgrade a little bit so they can provide services.
And do you know what, I'm putting you on the spot here, is that, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, do you know what type of internet access they have? I mean, do they have, you know, high-speed at Seneca Heights?
I'm not aware. I do know, like I said, that they have some type of internet access, just in that specific room.
As opposed to like dial-up?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not joking. I mean, this is a real problem in a lot of places around the country, particularly in places that serve underprivileged or formerly homeless families, so...
If they have cable TV at the facility, they probably have...
You would think that they would also have, yeah, but I just wanted to check. Yep, I actually, in my private life, I worked on some cases about the federal E-Rate program and the USAC program, which connects low-income folks to the internet, so I was curious about that. So anyway, that was my question. Thank you.
Rob?
Just to be clear in my mind, so is what, is being intended the purchase of these laptops for a tutoring lab, so they'll be stored in the lab, or is it going to be conveying the laptops to the children?
No, they all come to one central community room. They'll be locked and specifically used for the program.
Yeah, I'll just echo what I think Mike already said, which is that this facility at Seneca Heights and what MCCH has done with this program, a number of us have visited it on multiple occasions, and a couple of us helped build the playground there, it is, it is an incredible thing that they're doing over there at Seneca Heights, so they certainly deserve our support, and, you know, I just think they're, from what I've seen and what I know, they're really a model of how you help service families who are formerly homeless, so with that, I'll move that we approve the recommendation of the opportunity grant.
I'll second with the hope that the technology that's purchased is not obsolete by the time that's installed. That's the biggest concern, you know, this stuff is, this kind of equipment is becoming a commodity rather than a real hardware investment.
Okay, so we have motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries 3-0.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now we have Lisette again.
Yes, I'm back. The next request is for a new program, new organization to the city, and the Community Advisory Committee is recommending funding in an amount not to exceed $9,600 to be used to support startup training towards the implementation of a sources-of-strength program at Gaithersburg High School to be coordinated by the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill of Montgomery County. The committee believes that mental health programs for youth are critical to the future success of young people. The funds would be used for training adult mentors and peer leaders to work with 25 to 35 newly-arrived Spanish-speaking youth, the majority of whom have experienced some form of trauma. The city's grant would be used to bring in a national trainer and provide supplies. The training and follow-up meetings will be held in the spring. The program would be implemented in the fall. Once implemented, NAMI has committed to maintaining the program with other funding sources over the next three years or until it is self-sustaining.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Another great cause, another great program.
I thought if Penny was here, he would be enthusiastic about this. He's the kind of career, training, and assistance that's important. He's always emphasizes, so, not speaking for Henry, but speaking for myself.
How does this fit into other language services that are available in the local area, whether it's city-funded, city-grant-funded, or local organization-funded?
So this specific program is targeting the immigrant population, specifically at Gaithersburg High School. They're working in conjunction with the Children Playing Violence Task Force, and what makes this program so unique is that they are working to provide secondary trauma training to adults so that they can work with youth.
But is it supplementing something that's already there, or is this looking to fill a gap?
This is looking to fill a gap.
And I guess finally, is it, it's looking for supplementation of fiscal year 16, is this something that is going to be sought again in '17, or why aren't we seeking it? Because we're almost at the end of '16 as far as...
The training needs to happen now for the adults so that it can be implemented during the upcoming year. They do have the funding for implementation with the students, but they need the funding for training, the actual trainers.
Okay, so there's a current need, and that's why you're here.
Yes.
And I would add that, you know, at least what we're seeing in the headlines over the last several months, that the need for these types of services has probably peaked more than in the past right around this time, which would make sense that the need for additional trainers and additional support would happen around this time. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that seems to make sense.
That's true.
Would someone like to move approval?
Some would.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries 3-0. Thank you, Lisette. Well done. From the city attorney?
Nothing additional this evening.
Okay, anything from any other staff? Not seeing anything. Next week, as mentioned, we have our Arab-American Heritage Celebration at the Activity Center on April 11th. Following that, there will have our weekly meeting here. It's a work session where you have two topics, Old Town Park Plaza and Streetscape Design Concepts, and then public discussion on the proposed installation and design of small cell facilities in the right-of-way. That's something everybody in every neighborhood should pay attention to. Just a quick note, that federal regulations have made it so that small cellphone towers, maybe 20, 30-foot towers, now can go into residential neighborhoods, and we, as a city, do not have the power to stop it, to deny them the ability to put these in. What we do have the ability to do is control how they look and somewhat fine-tune where in the right-of-way or the easement that they would go. And that's what we're going to be discussing on the 11th, so everybody in every neighborhood should be paying attention to this, because this could come to any neighborhood in the city. That said, our next regular meeting of the mayor and council is April 18th, and we will see you at all of the events that have been mentioned thus far. Until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.